All right, thank you. Hello, it's Mike Harmer in Dewey Beach for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is Friday, March 1st at 5:00. We advertise an agenda. We're going to have a public hearing. And to get things started, we will do a roll call first. Oh, no, we'll do, we'll do the pledge then roll, then roll call. Pledge allegiance. Please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. All right. First thing we do is adopt the agenda which was posted and looking for a motion to adopt.
Make a motion.
All right, Jack with the motion.
I'll second it.
Jimmy with the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right.
I'm in attendance, too.
Oh, yeah. And the, the attendance, let's, yeah, let's do an attendance thing here first. So we have one commissioner, P&amp;Z commissioner, that's abstaining from the meeting with potential conflict. And then we'll go with a roll call, starting with Jack.
Yeah, Jack Rutherford. Jimmy O'Connor.
Mike Harmer.
Gary Oldkirk.
We have Fred, Fred Townsend here, town solicitor, and we'll take from there. All right. First thing on here is approval of the minutes. Dave, oh, I'm sorry, Dave Lyons is online. Dave, you want to announce?
Yeah, I'm here, present.
All right. Sorry about that, Dave. So we have a quorum, and, can you? So we, Dave made some minutes and sent them, sent them to me, looked at them, looked good. I sent them to you guys. So look for a motion to, to approve.
Make a motion.
Jack?
I'll second.
Jimmy with the second. Any comments? I have none. See none? All right. Look for a vote to approve. Just all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. So there's minutes administratively taken care of. All right. So we're going to talk about, before we open the public hearing, about what we're doing here. We've got two things in front of us. We've got one for an application, a public hearing, application for, to rezone a tax map, partial 334-20.14-20500. As posted, it's located on 24 Houston Street. And they want to re, Houston Street, to relocate it, or to change it from RB2 to RR, per the documents that were submitted and posted. And then the second thing is to talk about the town free board, which is currently one feet above the FEMA-based flood. And we probably won't make a final decision on that unless Mr. Persinger says it has to be done this month, only because we want to do a little bit additional research. But anyway, we'll see what we do with that. And Gary, you can think of that. I see that you're online, or Mr. Persinger, Commissioner Persinger. So let's go ahead and discuss the application. So Houston Street, there's, I think there's a hotel there, and I think they proposed to put three, split it up into three, and there's an ordinance, draft ordinance, and take it from, all, make it all residential. And let's go, Commissioner comments first. Any comments, discussion?
None.
None, none, none. None, none, none. See none? See none from Dave. All right.
Do you want to, just want to ask whether staff have any comment at this point?
Staff have any comment first, and then?
Is that the end?
And I, I, it's any, oh, Jim, okay. I see Jim and Don are online. Okay. So, sorry about that, Jim and Don, I wasn't looking up. And we do have Jim Deeds from Town Hall, Assistant Town Manager, and Don Hinks, the code official. So either you want to discuss, talk about code issues, or what, on the rezoning?
I personally, I personally have no comment, or, just neither of us discussed it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right.
And Jim? Any introduction of the application?
We see Jim's mic, but we don't see his camera. And if you're talking, Jim, we can't hear you, so.
Okay. So we can go ahead and begin, and, yeah, applicant, I'm sorry.
All right. So let's, we have no comments from the commissioners. We're going to open the public hearing for both. And the first one that we'll talk about is the rezoning. So sorry we had you stand up and then sit down. So whoever wants to talk, go ahead and do your thing. Announce, play your name and your role, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, thank you very much for, Vincent Thomas, on behalf of GRR Properties, for the rezoning of the.
Oh, yeah, Vince, I'm sorry, I got one more. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
I forgot to do one thing. I forgot to say, are there any people in the public there to have any comments first, before you start? Because the reason why I'm doing it this way is we got an email, and I want to ask Dave Lyons to summarize an email that we got. I know we got one, I don't know if we had any more. Dave?
Yeah, just the one, just about one comment from David Moskowitz. Is he on? I don't see him online, Kate, so I'm gonna assume he's not. So I'll just summarize his comments. His concern was that this rezoning would, could be considered a spot zoning, which is prohibited. The C Strand, that, the C Strand property is the only remaining parcel on the Ocean Block, Houston Street, with a zoning designation, too. His comment is, that's not correct, that the restaurant on the block is, is also adjacent to road by the sea in East of Maui, between Sunrise and Siesta, is illegal non-conforming properties, so this is spot zoning, his concern. The, if we're to summarize, his primary concern is that changing this zoning would set a precedent for other properties in that area to also request to be rezoned, and therefore changing, or, yeah, changing what's in the comp plan, which is that this, this RB2 is basically set aside for both commercial and residential properties. So I think that's pretty much summarizes his concern. If he's on, he can certainly speak more to it. I think that pretty much covers it.
All right. Thank you, Dave. And we received, as far as I know, nothing else. And I wanted to bring that up first, and I know Dave, that we have some more folks in here from the public, and you'll get your chance to speak if you'd like. But I wanted, Vince, Mr. Vince, I'd like you to talk about, maybe address that if you're, if you're prepared to talk about your thoughts on that. I did forward that email to you a little late, you know, I think I got it yesterday, and I thought to think, send it to you today, you know, right before lunch. So apologize for the tardiness and a day or so, but that's just the way it went. But anyway, that's why I did it that way, and you're up now for the third time.
Yeah, no problem. Thank, thank you. So I'm, I'm prepared to address the email, and I appreciate you sending it over.
Okay.
And I don't know if you guys have these materials that we.
We got your submittal, it's got your G.I.R. letters, and the attachments with the tabs, and all the pictures.
Yeah, yeah. I'll give you these, just so I'll refer to the tabs.
Oh, okay. Awesome. All right. Thank you. Awesome.
Well, if you have an extra one, I'll take it. I have it.
And nice color photos, so thank you for the color photos.
Yeah, no problem. Well, first, thanks, thank you all for your service to the community. I'm, I'm a resident, two partners are here today with my son, so you might see our son riding his bike on the North End from time to time in the summertime.
Awesome.
So, thanks for your service, we're really appreciative of all the value you guys bring to the community. I also want to thank, you know, Jim Deeds for all of his help in this process so far, and he participated in the State Plus meeting this week, and for taking the time doing that. And I'll, you know, certainly give an update of, not much to update there, the state had really no comments whatsoever. And I'll thank Fred as well during this process. So I'll, I'll start with just some general background about the property, its current condition, explain why we believe it's appropriate, the sections that we're seeking it under, explain the desired end result, explain why this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I'll address Mr. Moskowitz's email and the concerns therein, and then have you answer any questions from there. So 24 Houston Street, or Houston, however you prefer to say it.
Legally, the state calls it Houston.
Okay.
We'll say Dale knows that, it's been a long time.
I'll defer to you, so we'll go with Houston. The Siesta Hotel's there right now, it's 150 by 100-foot lot. It's currently zoned RB2. The building is, was built in 1961, has 30 units. It's in struggling condition, to say the least. I would tell you, in the beginning, when the property went on the market late in the summertime this past year, myself and some of the partners were working with a hotel developer, and to try to see if we could continue use. The developer happens to have properties in town, and a very significant player in the industry. Had under contract for that purpose. It was pretty quickly confirmed that that was not going to be a continued viable use, and there was really just no way to make that work. I think we've confirmed through the town that the occupancy tax that's being paid is less than $10,000 a year, so it shows you the relatively insignificant revenue that's being generated there, probably in large part due to, you know, condition of space. It's, it's nearing the end of its useful life. So for that reason, we're seeking to initiate a rezoning from RB2 to RR, really predominantly for the reason that we think that's a better fit within the community where this property's located. And I'll, I'll dive into detail on that in a few minutes of its neighboring the NR district. And I, I think despite some of the comments, it's very different from some of the other properties mentioned. And we're seeking to do this under 185-73 of the Dewey Beach Code, so if you turn to, to tab two, I have that outlined there. And this, this sort of highlights some of the purposes why we think this is appropriate. So looking at that code section, I'll read it verbatim. "Zoning regulations in districts here and established are designed to promote the health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the town of Dewey." And then if you turn down, you know, eight lines down, six from the bottom, it says, "This chapter is adopted to lessen congestion in the streets, to secure safety from the fire, panic, and other dangers, to promote health and general welfare, provide adequate light and air, and to prevent overcrowding of land." So with those things in mind, our, our plan would be to have this rezoned to RR, subdivided into 350-by-100-foot lots, and then build three residential homes consisting, consistent with the RR zoning. We're not seeking to do anything else. One of the comments in the email was, this is folks enriching themselves. I'll tell you, if we were seeking to do that, you know, the first partner in this project wanted to build 30 units on the property, 30 condo units. So that's not what we're seeking. We think that the three residential units really conform with that, it's the neighboring in our district, which I'll get into in a couple of minutes. The other, the other things, I think important to highlight, it's going to lessen congestion, there's 30 units, lot of in-and-out traffic, they're right there. As soon as you enter into that NR district, you know, you're leaving off to the right. So I want to talk about some of the objectives in the comprehensive plan, and how this is going to improve traffic congestion. I think it'll secure safe, safety from, from future dangers. The building's in bad shape. Recently, the, the rooftop deck was vandalized to the, to the point where it could no longer be used. So that's certainly not an ideal situation for the community. We do think it'll promote the health and general welfare and well-being, removing the structure. And certainly it's going to prevent overcrowding of land. You have 30 units there now, we're going to go down to three residential homes, consistent with the RR designation. So turning to the zoning map, this is tab four, and I'll just square on, address Mr. Moskowitz's comments here. He cited my prior comment of, this is the only RB2, and I said, on Houston Street in the, in the prior hearing. He can, he has, I guess, trouble with that, and cites to the Sunrise, which to me is on Clayton Street, that's not on Houston Street. I, I don't know anyone that can access Sunrise from, from Houston Street. So if you can do that, you know, let me know how you're, how you're doing that. So Houston Street's the, you know, that's the only RB2. You do have East of Maui, that's in the middle of the road. I couldn't see anyone putting sort of residential homes right, right in the middle there. So, you know, that's the only RB2 sort of neighboring the NR district. If we look all along Houston Street, both on the ocean side and on the bay side, it's all RR. And particularly on the bay side, even if you go down, you know, further to the bay side, you know, Clayton and Swedes, you know, that's all RR. So I think that's sort of consistent with neighboring the NR district, which, you know, the Siesta property does. All of the other properties mentioned in Mr. Moskowitz's email, none of them neighbor an NR district. And I think, yeah, that's a significant distinguishing factor, and I think it's a significant distinguishing factor in the comprehensive plan as well. The other thing I would point out is, if you take, you know, a really close look at the Siesta property, it's, it goes three lots in. So it's, it goes pretty deep into the ocean block, where most of the RB2s, or many of the RB2s, if you look at the, the properties on Clayton and Swedes, there are only two lots in. Same with Salisbury. You have the one in New Orleans that's going three in, but this is going three in on a, on a street that neighbors the NR district. So for that reason, I think, I personally think it's very distinguishable. Other things mentioned, I think in Mr. Moskowitz's email, were things in the comprehensive plan. And I pulled out a number of things from the comprehensive plan to demonstrate that I do think that this complies, and I'll sort of walk through them verbatim. So, so number one, if you look at page 30 of the comprehensive plan, and it's planning objectives related to critical community dealt, development challenges. And one of those is partner with Del Dot, Denrec, property owners and businesses to protect against overcrowding through the promotion of sustainable tourism. I think, you know, this redevelopment would certainly protect against overcrowding. Second, existing land use, and this is on page 51, so, or would an objective ensure future buildings are properly proportioned and fit within the existing character of the town? You know, I, I think if we're looking at that NR district, three residential homes fits much more within the character of that, of that area than a 30-unit hotel, or even if you keep it RB2, putting commercial on the bottom, and it can fit five units on the top. That's really not going to fit within the NR district, and couldn't be built in the NR district. Number three, so on page 54, the comprehensive plan redevelopment. And it says, "The town of Dewey Beach's position on redevelopment is to ameliorate existing conditions upon parcels throughout the municipality that are, that are characterized by blight or underutilization, and that in their current state, without intervention, present a detriment to the town's public health, safety, and welfare. Redevelopment should contribute to the town's overall attractiveness as a vibrant place to live, work, play, and recreate." So in Mr. Moskowitz's letter, he cites, I think, the property on Van Dyke that had to go to foreclosure before it was rezoned. You know, I would tell you, I mean, is the town really want to wait till the Siestas in that condition? That doesn't really make much sense to me. You have, you know, willing buyers to immediately develop the property as soon as possible, and, and put it into a condition. It's certainly an underutilized and blight property, as I've demonstrated. Fourth, there's some general transportation objectives on page 58, the comprehensive plan. I won't go into depth, but I would say, generally speaking, they promote safety on Route 1, and a pedestrian, and, you know, bicycling pass. Again, and I think, you know, in that NR district, we recently put in, or the town recently put in, you know, the, the walking signs and so forth. Just keep in mind, Houston Street is right where you sort of veer off to the right, there's an entry on Route 1. You know, that's, these new 50, these new single-family homes will have no access to Route 1, you know, it's, all the driveways will, will front Houston Street. So that's certainly going to make that, that little area there much safer, and it's certainly a highly, significant amount of pedestrians are, are walking, you know, out of the NR district into town. And then last, page 78, the comprehensive plan involving overcrowding. The objective stated there in is respect and maintain the character of the local communities. Consider enacting policies that encourage suitable residential development and counterbalance overcrowding by encouraging sustainable tourism. So, you know, we think this will, again, minimize overcrowding, and definitely encourage suitable residential development. So for that reason, we think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. On, on the spot zoning, while I'm respectful of Mr. Moskowitz's comments and respect them, I would just submit to the commission that that's, that's misguided, and that's, that's really not the law. So I've, I've pulled down two cases, and I'll cite language in them verbatim, and I can certainly provide them to Fred. But the Seminole case in the state of Delaware is McQuail versus Shell Oil, it's a Delaware Supreme Court case from 1962. And in that, and I'm just going to read some citations on spot zoning, and then I'll read a more recent case from 2020, that provides substantially more guidance. All right, just bear with me a second. So in the Mc, in the McQuail case, of course, says the following. "Spot zoning is generally defined as an attempt to wrench a small lot or small area from its environment, and give it a new rating that disturbs the tenure of the community." It certainly is not going to disturb the tenure of the community. And second, it says, "Normally, spot zoning benefits of private interests and has no relation to the general public interest," for the reasons I've just said. It has general relation to the, has relation to the general public interest. But more importantly, if we look at the Kane case, again, recently decided 2020, it's Kane versus Sussex County Council, involving a zoning case. And the language therein is, is pretty compelling on these issues, so. And again, I can give this to Fred, but spot, spot zoning is not an issue in Delaware. We have comprehensive plans, and as long as you're, you know, acting conform with comprehensive plans, never going to be found to be a spot zoning. This, this case says that. So the judge starts off with, and this was in the Delaware Chancery Court, so it was a master in chancery, says, "At what appears to me to be a final Hail Mary, the plaintiffs argue that the rezoning should be invalidated because it constitutes an unconstitutional or impermissible spot zoning." So the court then goes on to cite McQuail, the language I gave you earlier, and says, "The Delaware Supreme Court states that spot zoning is generally defined as an attempt to wrench a small lot or small area from its environment, and give a new rating that disturbs the tenure of the community." This is the important one. And this is, you know, the judge is quote, "Notably, my research indicates that spot zoning has never been employed to invalidate zoning ordinance in Delaware." And what he goes on to talk about is, post-McQuail, which was the spot zoning case, he says, "Delaware has imposed a comprehensive plan on Sussex County, but I have found that the rezoning here is compatible with that plan." He says, "In such case, to my mind, the spot zoning prohibition is subsumed within the requirement that the council act consistently with the comprehensive plan." So he goes on, so I don't think spot zoning is an issue, nor do I think it even is spot zoning, but I can provide more color there if there's more questions on that issue. But again, the, you know, even if one wants to suggest spot zoning, I would say it's not, you know, spot zoning would be going in the middle of the NR district, and, you know, seeking to put RB2, so you could put a lemonade stand and ice cream shop, because you think that's going to do better right in the middle of the NR district. This is going, you know, sort of, some people would say this is downgrading from RB2 to RR, in the RR district that neighbors an NR district, as reflected. So that's all I had. I'm happy to address any questions, and again, appreciate everyone's time.
Well, thank you very much. I do not have any questions. You've addressed all of my questions that I would have had. I think Dale's ready to add some questions, and.
First, I'd like to ask our county attorney of political, the comp plan, as I've finalized, voted on, et cetera. And I do not quite understand whether we should be addressing this with comp plan first, change, the ability to change zoning, or the P&amp;Z first, and then the comp plan?
So that's a good question, and that was actually what I was trying to get, comments from Mr. Deeds or Don Hinks, because the comp plan review of this application was made, and the review produced no, no comments. In other words, there were no objections to a rezoning of this property.
The state?
By the state planning office, right?
Yeah, I forgot to mention that, I apologize.
Well, you, I think you did mention it, but if you wanted to add to that, it'd be good to have in the record, I think.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I'm sorry, I didn't.
You did, I mean.
I spent enough.
You, you implied that they, they approved it, or they, they had no problem with it, but go ahead.
Yeah, we had the meeting on Wednesday, both for the rezoning and the comp plan. All the agencies were there. All the agencies said no comment and no objection to both the rezoning and, and the comp plan.
First, I want to compliment you for bringing your son, because I'd like to have the youth of America see how the local politicians work things out, not how national politicians work things out. You know, God forbid that he listens to the national news.
His, his greatest interest in the project, and I said this at the original meeting, is, is the soda machine that's sitting out in front of the Siesta, so that's what he would like to have. But I don't know if these two are going to let him have it.
I, I, I think probably, if I were to make a judgment right this second, I think it's probably best and good it houses in that area, when that street, you know, that would finish off the street and cut it, have a cutoff. I do worry about what we brought up, about other businesses having a snowball effect when other businesses changing, but I think other businesses are more in the, in the business district, so to speak, closer to the heart of town than this is. And, and as you mentioned, I think that it is going from overdevelopment to lower development, let's put it that way. I, I don't go along with you, that, yeah. I knew somebody would do it.
Sorry, guys.
It's usually me. I think that's, I think if it were going the opposite direction, if you were asking to put a business in on a lot that is already residential, I would have a problem with it, but I don't have a problem with it where it's located, and the fact that it's going to residential.
No, thanks very much. One thing I should have mentioned, too, it's the only, and I just wanted to get on the record, that it's the only property that has all residential surrounding it, with respect to all these RB2s that are rest in town. There's, it's on the map, it does show RB2 behind it, but there's actually, behind the Siesta, squeezed in between Sunrise and the Siesta, is a residential non-conforming home.
My first comment, I'd like to make to you, the neighbors have complained consistently about the water coming off that lot, the topography of, of the land, and when that runs the water down to your next neighbor on that side of the street, and floods their parking lot out. Now, Dave said that it's because more and more land has been built up around the motel. So if you could, that's not going to stop you today, but if you could take a look at that, and think about it, see what you all can do.
Got it.
All right, Dale, thank you. Jack?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. It does look like on this survey that Lot 1 does have, to me, a little bit of infringing of that side yard, sidewalk, and that, that phone pole from the satellite. Is that a concern? Is, is there a plan for that? That front left corner? It's like it's nearing. Which of the depictions? The foresight, the actual survey? Okay, so that's behind tab, tab three? Yep. Has that been raised by the town, or by the state? Any questions there?
The state had no issues. I don't, I don't know that there's any encroachments, but.
Okay. I just see the sidewalk there, and I know there's a telephone pole very close to it.
Yeah, the sidewalk, there, there's another, I need reading glasses now, but I think there's about 6.6, there's 6 foot 6 inches between the sidewalk and the property line. So I think the telephone poles are inside that 6 feet. Is that, is that right? I think I'm pretty sure. I think we're clear of the poles.
And then my second question is, you know, obviously in a perfect world, what does that timeline look like for the beginning of the project? Will there be phases? Will it be built all at the same time? What does that in a perfect world look like for the applicant?
Yeah, in a perfect world for us, we'd be, be building them in the fall, all three homes.
All three together?
Mm-hmm. That's perfect, Ron. I mean, it's not perfect, but that's, that's what we'd like to do.
I think, you know, you know, personally, I grew up using that soda machine a lot, and I, you know, walked those streets a lot. You look at the, the community, you look at the town, you look at, at the growth, and you look at the change, and I think that you see, you have to look at the, the future. And I think that the space like this does offer some great opportunities. Like I say always in my comments, it's about our, our next generations and our younger generations, and making sure that we provide something for them. And this does look like it could do that, just making sure that all the parameters have been met. And the reason I ask about the phases is, if you looked at Jersey, with a couple of the houses that were built, there are some water issues, and making sure that we take care of our, our flooding and our stormwater management, so.
All right, thank you, Jack.
I have none.
All right, we have Dave, any, well, first of all, you're, you're done, right, right, Vince?
He can stand for questions.
So we, Dave, you got any comments or any questions?
Um, I don't. I don't have any comments or questions. I think anything I haven't been answered, so that's great. Thank you.
All right. I don't see anybody's hand up online, so.
James can be back online, so.
We see, Jim, do you have any comments? Jim Deeds?
No, everything's good.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So, anybody else?
So, just for the record, if you can stand for a second, just for the record, Jim, what was, what was stated about the outcome of the State Planning Office review was accurate? You were there, is that right?
I was there and Vince's comments were correct. They had no objections to the amendment to the comprehensive plan nor to the rezoning from an RB2 to resort residential.
Okay. Any other questions from the board or Jim?
No questions. I have no questions.
Could I ask Mr. Thomas a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I apologize, you probably said this already, but behind your Tab 4, you circled 24 Houston Street, right? So, to the south, what's immediately to the south of this property?
Yeah, immediately to the south is there's a residential home there. It says RB2, but it's really, it is a residential home.
Is there like, is there an area that appears to be vacant, like half the lot is open? Or is it entirely, is there just one lot next door and that happens to be a residential use?
Yeah, so right behind the Siesta, there's a residential use and then there's a Sunrise.
It's all on the same property. There's a non-conforming residence there along with a restaurant.
Okay, so that was my point. So, the, the use of the adjacent lot is residential?
Yes.
And that's a legal non-conforming use in the RB2 district? It's non-conforming because by district, it's required to have first floor commercial?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Correct, yeah.
All right.
I do have a comment, if I can add to that, to what Mr. Townsend said. That goes back to a change in the rezoning of all the districts and that goes back, I think, to 2009. And that was all resort residential at one point and we changed it when I was on the planning commission to become an RB2 district. The owner of that property filed for an application and permit to build a house prior to the rezoning change.
Thank you, Jim.
The plans you guys have submitted, the renderings, is this what the actual proposed building specs are or is this a proposal or is this what the team will be going with?
Just samples, sorry, not proposal, but that's similar in nature to...
Generally what you guys would be building?
Going to be substantially consistent.
So, I'd like to comment on that if I can.
Absolutely.
So, at this stage of the proceedings, it is like a catch-22 situation for the applicant because oftentimes the applicant is going to be asked questions relating to what, what the future development of that property is going to be. So, the applicant feels compelled to provide some information in response to that.
Right.
Aside from just saying that wants it to be rezoned residential to develop it in that fashion. But at the same time, if you were to approve the rezoning, the applicant would not be like contractually required or conditionally required to do exactly something like this. It's, I think it's helpful to the board to be able to, or the commission to be able to envision what might happen there, but it is not...
The reason I said is obviously, you know, Vince is a local Realtor, it's important to see generally what could or might go there to understand the, the future.
Yeah, just to put it in perspective, again, can't make any promise, but the other home to one of my partners put is the new house on Houston on the Bayside. That was in a 75 by 100 lot.
All right. Anyone else from the public want to talk? See, none? All right. We got somebody on Zoom. Who's on Zoom?
David Moskowitz.
Okay, Mr. Moskowitz, would you like to speak?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, David Moskowitz, I live full-time in Dewey Beach and like, I think the argument is being misconstrued. There's three residences they're looking to put. The issue is the front side should have the first floor commercial and they're saying, well, we border non-conforming legal, but then right next to that is Sunrise Diner, which at the beginning of the proceeding, Assistant Town Manager owned and on February 12th, apparently it was sold for 2.2 million to an LLC. The people who bought Sunrise Restaurant, if you approve this, are going to now say, hey, we border residential, we want to get, waive the first floor commercial requirement. Then you have Collier's Trim Shop in the Minigolf and Izzy Plaza, which also looked to do it and was denied by the town. So, the town needs to do it for everyone or do it for no one. So, the problem is once you open Pandora's box, because all throughout town, people have asked to get rid of the first floor requirement. You may not even have Woody's because the problem is when the first floor requirement, it turns a property from a conforming mortgage to a non-conforming mortgage. So, all throughout town, you had, have people ask. On Van Dyke, the guy went bankrupt and the bank took it over and for 30 years, it couldn't be anything because of the commercial requirement. So, the commissioners need to understand, if you're going to do it for this property, there's going to be an avalanche and right now, after you approve it, Sunrise Diner, that will be at risk and so will most of the business area in town. So, it's a snowball effect and the question is, if you approve it for him, will you approve Izzy Plaza to be residential as well for the first floor? I, I, I mean, it just, it's just, you're going to make someone a million dollars today, but you have to understand the ramifications for the town. And again, there's three houses he's talking about. We're just talking about the front-facing portion, the first floor should be commercial and then whatever else. But I mean, it sounds like it's going to be approved, just don't be surprised when Sunrise Diner looks to be saying, hey, we're bordering residential, we want to go residential as well. And that, actually, one more argument or the, the comp plan committee should have won first because this, the planning and zoning is supposed to follow the comp plan. The, two of the members on the planning and zoning board are on the comp plan and they form a majority. So, if you approve it, it's not like the comp plan committee will be independent people. Technically, it's basically going to be the same people who approve it today.
Thank you, Mr. Moskowitz. Any further comments?
That's it.
Thank you. Are there any more comments from the public? Kate, anybody else online? All right, thank you. Vince Thomas, Mr. Thomas?
Could I offer one response to Mr. Moskowitz, just because I think there's a slight mischaracterization of the argument?
Sure.
Yeah, so all the other commercials you mentioned and the snowball effect, and I think this is worth reiterating, none of those properties neighbor the NR district like this parcel.
You mean what it properties what?
Neighbor the NR district, the neighborhood residential and, you know, the town has protected that, that district has reduced some of the building requirements, switched to five, from 5,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet and is really promoting, promoting a residential area. And now this neighbors that. And again, if you look on the other side of the street on House, then it's all residential, even the neighboring properties to Route 1. And this would be consistent with that. All the other properties that Mr. Moskowitz mentions, that's, it's not consistent. I mean, if you go from, from Sweets down, it's RB2 along Route 1 all the way on both sides of the street. So, again, and none of them can say they're next to the NR district and I think that's a significant difference, particularly looking at the comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you.
Have all the neighboring properties been notified, let me guess, possibilities?
That's a question, I think, for the town clerk, but we have, I think, we sent, we sent notifications to, to the neighboring properties?
We did not.
We did not?
It was posted in the news, people. We did not send notifications.
Okay, well, I'll have to check and see where that, where that leaves us.
I don't think there's going to be a problem, but I'm just wondering.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to the next item and then we'll take our vote.
Thanks very much.
So, the next, the next item is, is about the one-foot freeboard, making it bigger. And is, my first question to Town Hall, to Jim, is there a rush on this? Because I think where we're at is we'd like to do a little research. That's why I'm going to ask the planning and zoning commissioners if they'd like to do a little additional research versus like a one-foot, two-foot, three-foot. So, Jim, Jim or Mr. Commissioner Pershinger, I guess Jim Deeds, Mr. Deeds first, is there a, is there an urgency for us to approve this based upon anything going on?
No, not that I'm aware of.
All right, so for me, I, I would like to see a little bit of research and Dave Lyons has, is, I think, going to volunteer to look at 1, 2, 3 and give us a little summary because when we, when we implemented the one-foot, you know, 10, 15 years ago or whenever we did it, we, there's, there's some things about the 35-foot height and how that works with the base flood and I'd like to see some talking points on that. We, we probably should have done that research prior to this meeting, but I did not and I apologize for that. But the bottom line is, is I was, I am an advocate for the highest freeboard we can get away with and, and, and what, in the research, Dave, it, well, first of all, Dave, are you willing to do some research?
Yes.
He's been volunteering.
No problem. I volunteered to do the research.
You're a good man. All right. So, in that research, I have, I have, there's another thing that could, could be, and this is no promise, good for all of us in the town because I think there's a rule that if we enhance the ability to minimize floods further, there may be some global discount on the insurance somehow. I don't know how that works. So, if Dave, in your research, you know, there's somebody in town understands how that works and if not, you can talk to our HOA's insurance company and they'll tell us. But that could be part of the research and it could be a positive for the town. The balance will be, how high does it affect the 35? What does it do? And that's what we debated when we went with the one-foot. So, but I never thought the one-foot was adequate, you know, with all the flooding and global warming and all that stuff, you know, but that's for another day. Just some talking points and we'll see where we're at. Jim Deeds, is there anything else you have to add to that, like thought process or what do you think?
I would defer to Dawn because she's much more familiar with the FEMA requirements and the NFIP.
Dawn, if you're willing to chat for a minute and then we'll go to public, well, we're in a sort of public hearing still, so we'll go to public next for any comments and any wise advice and then we'll close it down, vote on the planning, zoning, rezoning and then we'll move forward and schedule another meeting at some other time to fully address the flood freeboard with additional information that will help us make a more educated decision.
Certainly, I'll be glad to give you what information I have learned and no doubt there's additional that I have not learned.
That's fine, we'll find it. Dave's, Dave's really good at researching.
When, when it comes to what's called the BFE or Base Flood Elevation, that is the level that FEMA through their technology has established as being a 1% chance every year for flooding to come across the land. And so FEMA is required every five years to report to Congress whether or not they are going to change the flood maps of any area here within the United States. So FEMA establishes that minimum level in which they, their technology says it will flood to at a 1% chance every year. Now, freeboard is an additional measure of safety that is a voluntary amount added on to the required base flood elevation that FEMA has adopted and stated that we must have our buildings built to if there's new construction. So, the one-foot freeboard is optional, whether it's one foot, two foot, three foot, that is for each municipality or locality to discuss whether they want to have that or not and what the amount should be. But it is an additional measure of safety and it is part of what's called the CRS program or Community Rating System. And the more that towns work with CRS, we are told that insurance premiums could possibly be reduced with having not just freeboard, but there's a whole plethora of other requirements in order for towns or municipalities to get points in order to reduce flood insurance premiums. Now, just so that you'll know, then the Sussex County and ultimately the town has adopted the 2021 International Residential Building Code as well as the IBC, the International Building Code. They go hand in hand. Within that code, it is, they have a minimum requirement of base flood elevation, whatever FEMA says, plus one foot. So, that's the minimum that that current International Code Council has chosen as the minimum. Anything additional is up to the municipality to decide.
That was extremely thorough, as you always are, Dawn, and we really appreciate it, very, very much so.
Very good.
So, some of my concepts were correct and we hope to continue that discussion. Anybody from the public like to talk about on that? Oh, so Dave Thomas would like to give us some wise advice?
Hi, Mike, hi, everybody. Dave Thomas here, 1 Reed Street. Happy St. David's Day.
Thank you, Dave.
March 1st is also the first date of Phase 2 of the Climate Adaption Planning as prepared by George Miles and Burr, a consultancy a nearby town has used. And in reading the report recently, I see where, under the Community Rating System that Dawn had just mentioned, by adopting there a two-foot freeboard requirement, that alone would garner over 2,000 points under the Community Rating System. That would be equivalent to a 20% reduction in flood premium under the NFIP, National Flood Insurance Program, according to their report. By getting the so-called what-if printout of the NFIP materials specific to Dewey Beach as to how many dollars a 20% reduction would actually trans, work out to be each year for the whole town would become known in certain ways. I believe this would be important information to be put into consideration in that one-foot, two-foot, three-foot. And I share, Mike, your, your sentiment that more is better. And, and when you get to going from 10% to a 15 to a 20% reduction and the dollars and then you get the what-if printout and you find out how many, how much money that translates to, I think that's an important thing to be taken into account. I've been away from my email for a week at this point to the day due to a death in the family. So, as such, what I've said here today is my own private individual perspective as I've expressed it. The, I said in certain ways, the, one area that is incomplete as to that printout is you get into how many existing flood policies there are in the town and then that gets into, well, how many of them are within the flood zone? How many of them, for Dewey's purposes, are in Zone X and we don't have a shaded RX, which gets into a whole another little wrinkle there. But when the premium is reduced, the question becomes, how many more people will buy insurance because it's more affordable? because it's more affordable? Or what is the elasticity of demand according to price sensitivity? So it may be that people will respond to a 20% difference, particularly when the printout, you know, and you get some handle on what dollars we're talking about here, and for the whole town, that might, things might change. Yeah, you get more people buying the insurance. And then also, there's Activity 510, and that is the outreach, that you get out to the public, a knowledge of what is there and what can be done. And hey, maybe this is something I ought to think about as a property owner and to look into. So I think that's all a good and healthy process, and I support the idea that that kind of examination would be done.
Thank you so much, Dave. And you can count on us doing some serious research on this, because it's only good for us to look at that detail.
I agree, absolutely. Okay.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Anybody else from the public? Commissioner Pershanger?
I'm either from the public, or I'm on the Town Council, I'm not sure which at this point. But first of all, there's no sense of urgency for getting this done. Certainly, if you want to take some more time to consider it, do some more research. This was the top recommendation that came out of the Climate Change Committee. Several months ago, I forget exactly when the recommendations came out. So I wanted to get this into the process. And so that's why I got it on the last Town Council agenda, and then, you know, now it's on your agenda for consideration. It's completely consistent with the recommendations in the Comp Plan. And I, you know, if you look at some of the recommended strategies that you'll see online from FEMA and others, one of the top recommended strategies for flood mitigation is to increase the freeboard. And I did find a reference, it's a July 2020 reference, where, as Dawn said, having a freeboard is voluntary, but it is a recommended strategy to have at least one, one foot of freeboard, that's by FEMA. I found in some other FEMA publications that they have documented freeboard in various municipalities, anywhere from six inches up to four feet. So as I think I said in the one-page write-up, when the town, when the town commissioners considered the plans for the new Town Hall, we voted unanimously to ensure that the freeboard for the new Town Hall would be, would be three feet. Finally, a couple of other questions. I did find some documentation, much like Dave Thomas just reported, where there would be some sizable, potentially sizable benefits from, financial benefits and flood insurance from increasing the freeboard. What I found was a little bit old, I think FEMA has a, the NFIP has a new, newer pricing strategy, so I'm not sure how that fits in, but there's some research to be done there. Finally, this has nothing at all whatsoever to do with 35, the 35-foot height limit. We're talking about structures that are in the flood plain. The fight, the height limit there is 32 feet from base flood elevation plus one degree, one foot of freeboard. So whatever the freeboard is determined to be, you still have 32 feet on which to build from at that point. So it has no relationship at all to the 35-foot height limit.
Awesome, yeah, I knew there was some kind of rule like that, because we went over it in detail with Dave King back in the day when we did all that. So thank you for the refresher on that. And I do look forward to where we go with this, because it can only be good for the town, and possibly save us some money, et cetera, et cetera. So any more comments from the public? I see Kate's got her hand up. Oh, Mr., okay, let's go to Mr. Muskowitz. We're on the freeboard issue there. Mr. Muskowitz.
So I just wanted to remind you, because I think the town forgot, there used to be a planning committee, and then a zoning committee separately. And David King was chair, and in 2014, he did a lot of research on how to get us the discount. And that discount lasted till the town forgot about how to get the discount. So maybe like 2021 or 2020, the town lost the discount. But there is not just one thing, there's many things. And what the town should do is sparehead, because this is one of many that would be great for the town to get the discount. And it should be an urgent issue, because going from 5% to like 10 or 15 would help give us a much better discount.
Yes, well, we're definitely proceeding forward and recognize what you just said. So thank you very much for that. We do all potentially stand to save some money. Our insurance alone went up like $150,000 or something it was, you know, at our HOA. So this year, and it was very painful. And I did.
And it's just gonna keep on going up, because the insurance company has, some insurance has left the state. And so, I mean, again, I would love for you to recommend to the town commissioners that you be tasked with looking at all ways to save on the point system that's reasonable, because Dave King said, hey, we could get 15%, but it was unreasonable, so he kept it at 10. But you need to test the town commissioners to test you with that process, or someone has to be tasked, like in 2014.
Well, we'll do some research and see where we land, but thank you so much for reminding us of that. That's good stuff. All right, any more comments from anyone else? Public, Kate, you see anything out there? All right. With that being said, let's close the public hearing. And we have two action items. So the second one, I don't think we're gonna vote on the freeboards. You know, that's basically, we already know what we're gonna do, we're gonna do some research, unless I hear anything else.
Did you say, do we need to make a motion to have further discussion at our next meeting, or put a timeline on it?
Yeah, well, we, well, we, first of all, let's do, let's take care of these guys, so they can move on, and we'll do ours. So let's do Item 1 in order. So we have this application for rezoning. Are there any, is there a motion for that? There's an ordinance attached to the information, so that would be, the motion would be to talk about that ordinance.
So you can start with a motion, or you can deliberate some, and then have them, then recognize a motion.
Yeah, we're gonna start with a motion, and then we'll deliberate. So any motion for the ordinance?
So what, and when it's time to vote on the ordinance, vote on the motion to adopt, or recommend the ordinance, rather, because this is a zoning issue, and, you know, most everything you do relates to zoning, you're gonna, you're gonna vote by roll call, one at a time, and give your reasons for why you feel that this is an appropriate ordinance to enact.
Awesome, okay. Thank you for the guidance, Mr. Townsend. And so the ordinance is the last two pages, and I'm just seeing if there's a motion to recommend the ordinance or not.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept, or to accept the ordinance as written, to rezone the subject parcel 334-20-14-205 to, as he just stated.
All right, so there's a motion, there's a second for that, and then we'll discuss.
I'll second it.
Mr. O'Connor has, Mr. Connor has said second? All right, and now we're in the discussion phase. Anybody wanna?
Just a quick question. Yeah, so all the notices that the town needs to, we're good?
Thank you, yes, we are good. There's no mailing requirement on rezonings, thank you.
All right, I see no more comments from the commissioners. Now we're for the votes, so we'll go individual votes. Let's do, Dave, why don't you start online and give your reason for making the motion and supporting it, or whatever?
I'm gonna vote in favor of the motion. I believe it addresses the Comp Plan. I think it's in keeping with the Comp Plan in terms of redeveloping the NR district, or keeping the NR district whole. I think it's also a good change to deal with the Siesta Hotel, and obviously is gonna need some, some significant change or repair. So I think it's a wise thing to do.
Thank you. Dave, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Rutherford?
Yep, I'll vote in favor. I think that 185-3, the purpose, is very important for future growth, future sustainability. We look at what is there, and what will potentially be there, and how the town has grown through four generations, and look to see what it looks like in the next four generations. So for that, I'm for it.
All right.
I'm in favor. I think it does clean up a little safety issue with the traffic pattern over there, with the access to Route 1, it's just, I think it cleans that up as well, for other reasons, I am in favor.
All right, and I'm gonna vote in favor. I think, you know, reducing the number of units is huge, a huge win for the town. It definitely, you know, is in line with some of the items in the comprehensive plan, as pointed out by Mr. Thomas. On, you know, we should protect against overcrowding, and the Page 51, ensure future building are within the character of the town. And it, the, it goes in line with, involves the property safe, having, you know, no, no access to Route 1, as Jim stated. So those are my notes, and that's the reason why I'm gonna support this, and I'll move on to Dale, Mr. Cook.
I'm gonna, in general, support it also, I'm gonna vote to support. I, the only problem I have with it is that the town, I don't think is following a good process. I think the town, we're changing the Comp Plan, the zoning in the Comp Plan, and I think we, a lot comparatively. The Comp Plan has been to last for 10 years, with a five-year, at the five-year point of rehashing of it. And I think if we're gonna continue to do individual lots, and say we're gonna correct the problem, we ought to be going to the Comp Plan Committee, along with the state. We went to the state, and that's what swayed me the most on this today, by the way. But we haven't, we haven't gone to our own Comp Plan Committee, and simply asked, like, why did you make that zoning that way you did? Nobody's asked that. Nobody had said, why was it zoned the way it is zoned right now? And they should, you should know that, but we don't. But I think overall, the, the plan as it would present it does, is better for the town. I agree that it's gonna have less density, and I think that's good for the town. And I vote for it.
All right, so that's a unanimous vote of the quorum that we have today on Item 1. So that will go to the town commissioners for recommendation. Fred will make sure that happens. So the second item is a motion to continue the research.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to, with our great committee, to extend for some diligent research on the different height requirements to help advantage the town with savings where is as is. So I'd like to make a motion for that to be reviewed at the next meeting.
Awesome. Second from Dale, Mr. Cook, on favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, and then before we go to the closing, I'd like to thank Dale Cook for all his service to the town as commissioner, you know, the town commissioner, Planning and Zoning Committee, even all kinds of stuff.
Mayor.
And mayor, and I mean, years and years and years, and I mean, of service that pays nothing, and, you know, sometimes headaches, sometimes joyous. And Dale, yeah, you're a good man, so it's been a pleasure knowing you.
Do you wanna tell him why you're saying that?
Well, he's going to live with his son in Annapolis, I think, in Edgewater, Maryland. And we're losing a great resident, and thank you, and friend, and volunteer, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you, Dale. All right. So anyway, they were looking for, any committee member comments?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. Dale, thank you for everything. You were a great resource to my dad, a great resource to this town of Dewey Beach, and you filled a huge void for this town when it needed the most, so thank you for your service.
All right, we, and we, we'll ditto all that was just said for Jim Bellicky, because he backed down from the commission too. So we're looking for a couple of members. Just call me, or call Town Hall, if we have an engineer or a background, any background that's organized and technical. Either way, thank you all, and let's go ahead and motion to close.
Motion second.
Second, if you got that, and we'll say it was Jack, motion and second by Mr. O'Connor, Mr. O'Connor, and it will say, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We're done.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.